Hey everybody, everybody, welcome, welcome, welcome to another episode of Raging Chickens Out to Coop Live. Yes, it is Kevin Mahoney, yours truly, editor and founder of Raging Chicken, coming to you these dog days of August. Yes, I guess it is. It's our first August show. Since I am, you know, finally back from vacation, the last time going away for the summer, so I'll be here. Anyways, here on Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards from across the country. On Friday, Sean Kitchen and I break down the good, the bad and the ugly in state and national politics. And of course, you got to check out the Wednesday show with Cyril Micalaco. Cyril's a progressive columnist from the Bucks County Courier Times and Intelligencer. He joins me on Wednesdays to drill down into Bucks County, Pennsylvania, international politics. You can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcast on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, Stitcher, wherever you get your podcasts. You can get Out to Coop, Raging Chicken's shows. And you can help support this show by becoming a patron for as little as $5 a month. Go to patreon.com/RCpress. That's patreon.com/RCpress. Yep, and show us some love. For as little as $5 a month, you can help support all of these amazing shows. You can also help out the show by heading on over to our YouTube channel, if you're not there already, and smash that subscribe button, hit the like, like the stream for this show, and hit that notification bell so that you'll know every time we go live. We're also broadcasting live on riverside.fm. You can join us on riverside.fm. And you can call into tonight's show during the second half of the show. All that information is in your show notes, if you're watching right now on YouTube. If you click on that link, one thing you need to know, if you're going to kind of come in on riverside.fm, you want to make sure that you're minimizing or getting off YouTube or turning off the volume on YouTube, just so you don't get that feedback and that delay. More information about that a little bit later in the show. And for more PA progressive talk, tune into The Rick Smith Show's live stream at 9:00 PM Eastern on his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook. You know, wherever, wherever you stream, you're going to find Rick there every night at 9:00 PM. You also want to subscribe to his podcast, wherever you get your podcasts. You can check out his show on Free Speech TV at 7:00 PM on Saturdays and his new show on WBAI. I'm going to get their times messed up, but that's on Saturday night too as well. So I think that one's from 6:00 to 8:00, but don't quote, I'm not sure. I have to double check it all because he's got so many things going. But definitely check out, just go to ricksmithshow.com for all that information. And you've got to check out the Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast if you haven't already. If you haven't already, I don't know what you're waiting for. The amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast rock the house. And they know where the bodies are buried. Make sure to follow them on Twitter and at The Night Caucus and subscribe to their podcast on Anchor, Spotify, iTunes, wherever you get your podcasts. And attention to any gamers out there, yes, The Game Inn, that's The Game Inn, I-N-N. The Game Inn is a Quaker Town-based, black family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show and they've got everything from retro N64s to the latest consoles, video games for all platforms, loads of collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops, you name it. And you know what? When school's in session, your kid gets an A, they get a discount at the store. I mean, come on, it's amazing. Check them out on their Facebook page, follow them at Twitter at @TheGameInn with two N's. You know, got a question about a game, looking for something hard to get, you know, just kind of send them a message and they'll kind of look it up for you. Special shout out once again to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, There Are No People in the Future. Check out all his great stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @Songadayman, that's with two N's, @Songadayman on Twitter. Well, I'll tell you, everybody, on tonight's show, you know, it's, it's good to be kind of back in, you know, in this seat again, checking out what's going on here in Pennsylvania and across the country. I had a good time away in Utica, New York, where, where I grew up, right, for, you know, most of my life in Utica, New York. And so it was kind of interesting going up there. I posted some pictures out on our Instagram page and on my personal Instagram page and stuff. You know, it's interesting to see how much has changed in Utica, New York and, you know, and what, and what has stayed the same during that time. You know, one of the things that really struck me is that one night I went out to just a grocery store, right? And it was in kind of East Utica, which had, when I was growing up, that was kind of the Italian, that was kind of like Little Italy right there. The Italian section primarily, like Italian section of Utica. And a lot of the Italians, you know, they were there because, you know, first generation immigrant, second generation. Then a lot of them moved to North Utica, which is where I grew up. My, my brother Sean would say that's called Deerfield, because it's so far north on that city line, but I digress. But anyways, I go in there and, you know, that East Utica in particular has completely, like, it's gone through a metamorphosis, right? It was an area that had been dying out, that people were leaving the town, you know, it's the story of any industrial city, right? I mean, industry closed down, closes down, there's no jobs. And so the kids and the people who grew up there end up leaving, right, kind of moving on for, you know, greater pastures elsewhere. But in the meantime, Utica had, is like a refugee center in New York State. And so we've seen these kids, like these waves of kind of like immigrants and refugees kind of come into Utica. I remember even at the end of my time in high school, there was a bunch of folk from Vietnam coming in. A little bit later on, it was Bosnian, there was a big Bosnian migration in the 90s. And then you had Dominicans coming in and you had, you know, kind of a range of different kind of, you know, people from different ethnic groups, different religions, different cultures. And so I go to this grocery store, right, and, you know, I'm walking down these aisles. And, you know, when I grew up, if there was like, you know, the, the Mexican food was like, you know, tortillas and some hot, and some, you know, salsa or something like that, right? That would be like Mexican and maybe you'd have some kind of, you know, Chef Boyardee or kind of, you know, some major brand Chinese food. But it was, you know, it was Italian section, right? And then there was like, what'd you find in a rest of, kind of like a American grocery store? But anyway, so I go in there today, you know, I'm going there, I'm looking at stuff, there's interesting baked goods and stuff. And I'm looking around and like, you know, there's, there's a woman and her kids and she's wearing a job, right? There's kind of like folks speaking Vietnamese and people speaking Dominican or Spanish. And going down the aisles and there's whole sections, like whole, an entire aisle in this store that's labeled with like Bosnian, right? And then halal, there's all these halal shops and it blew my mind. It was, it was, it felt like, holy crap, you know, out of the ashes of this post-industrial town is rising, right? You know, the possibilities of our kind of multicultural democracy, which we often talk about on the show, right? And I was just like, you know, it gave me so much hope in a lot of ways. Now, look, that area, you know, it's still kind of, there's parts of it are still kind of run down and not doing great. So I want to kind of paint too rosy a picture here. But, you know, so then I, you know, you go kind of across the, literally across the railroad tracks in North Utica, which was kind of like, you know, it was kind of the more suburban, you know, everything that was built in, it looks like New Jersey, good sections of New Jersey, basically. Kind of where I grew up and, you know, you see primarily white. You know, I, I don't think I saw the entire time I was in North Utica, anytime I was in North Utica, I don't think I saw one person who was not white. Except, you know, when I went, actually had to go to the store for something in North Utica. Did see some African Americans there, but that, that was, that was kind of it. And what also just, you know, throws me every time I go back there is all the Trump signs that are still out there, right? I mean, I got a picture of a guy, he's still got a flag out, you know, Biden is not my president, you know, Trump won, don't blame me, you know? I mean, all this kind of stuff, the guy who's still like, you know, don't, don't tread on upstate, you know, with the big little, oh, by the way, I figured this out. You know, I got stuck behind this guy who was, you know, had this like big don't tread on me sticker in the back of his pickup truck. You know, you know what I'm talking about, the snake, it's all coiled up. And I'm sitting there and we're kind of like sitting in traffic a little bit and I'm thinking like, hey, you know what? If you had like a, like a brown Sharpie, right, or paint marker, and you just kind of traced around it and then filled it all in, it would like look like a poop emoji. I was like, that's awesome. It'd be like a poop emoji, right? So I was like, that's awesome. I was like, you know, hmm, what can do with that? Anyways, so, yeah, so anyways, I was up in Utica, kind of saw all that stuff. And, you know, it, it just reminds me about, you know, this, this moment in history that we're in, where there's, there's such dramatic change that's going on and there's, we have like all the opportunities to kind of really just, you know, grab that brass ring, so to speak, and kind of really delve into like an amazing future. At the same time that we're battling like, you know, the forces of, you know, of darkness, really. I mean, I don't know what else you call it, but they want you to take you down the memory hole and kind of, and like take you back to a time that never existed, or take to back time that existed only for kind of white people and primarily kind of middle-class white people. Imagine everybody forgets, but anyways. And so I come back and so I'm, you know, kind of looking, thinking about the show this week, starting to kind of make some arrangements for guests in the weeks coming up and stuff. And I'm planning, you know, thinking about tonight and I was thinking, you know, what do we talk about tonight? Well, you know, a few things to begin with is like, well, you know, there, the IPC, the IPCC, you know, the International Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, they released a climate report today and it is not looking good for business as usual. Plus, you know, the school year is right around the corner as you're kind of preparing my kids to go back to school. And you see, at the same time that's just going on, is that you've got the, you know, the, the Delta variant of the coronavirus is just spiking. And so now there's all these kind of, you know, cultural battles over masks happening again. You know, as, you know, you know, we cross that threshold again of like 100,000 cases a day. 100,000 cases a day. I mean, here in Pennsylvania, right, I was, I was looking at this today. This is between 12:00 AM on Saturday, August 7th and 12:00 AM on Monday, August 9th. There were 4,080 additional positive cases of COVID-19, which brought the statewide total to like 1,237,956. 754 individuals were hospitalized with COVID-19. And of that number, 185 patients were in the intensive care unit. That, that's just in Pennsylvania, right? And we know the news coming out of Florida is just like, is just like, I, I don't know, it's like, it's like watching a split screen. It's like you're watching this virus rip through the population. And then you're watching the kind of the official kind of governing bodies, including the governor down there at DeSantis, who's just in all-out kind of Trumpian denialism. I mean, it just, it's bizarre. So you got that going on. And then tonight is, you know, Penridge School Board is meeting. School Board is meeting, yes. What do I want to say about that? Anyways, there tonight and we find out there was these, not found out, it was, one of our listeners sent this to me earlier today, I think, might've been yesterday, but I think it was earlier today, about, you know, these folks that have been canvassing in the neighborhoods with, you know, supporting these kind of QAnon, kind of ultra-right, kind of, you know, conspiracy theorists candidates for school board. All kind of basically prepping for tonight. And they're prepping for tonight by, right, going all in the kind of critical race theory nonsense, right? I mean, you know, we've talked about this on the show before about the democracy, or I'm sorry, the diversity, equity and inclusion. Oh God, yeah. Inclusion report basically, or initiative to basically make sure that our schools are responsive to all kids of all backgrounds and all this stuff. Our places for, you know, we're learning to happen and so on, you know? And that's all pretty crazy. Emily just kind of jumped in the chat, hey Emily, what's up? And reminded me, yeah, this is just like, we had an F3 tornado touchdown in Ben Salem a couple of weeks back, right? And then there were, on that day, actually, there was like two that touched down kind of around Ben Salem. There's one, there was one around the New Hope area and there, I think there was a total of eight when it was all said and done, kind of in the region, right? So some of them were on the other side of the Delaware in, in New Jersey. Some of them were a little bit more minor, that were kind of a little bit north of Lehigh Valley. But, you know, here we go. We've got wildfires that are going like absolutely kind of insane, right? We've seen like floods like I've never seen before in my life. I mean, I'm sitting there watching some of the flooding that was happening in China, that was happening in, you know, I mean, actually in Bristol Township, you know, right here in Pennsylvania. But what happened in, in Belgium, right? You know, I, I talked to my friend Stu, who's, he lives over in Derry in Northern Ireland. He's like, we've seen, you know, record temperatures that we've never seen before. We're seeing droughts unprecedented. They had to shut down some hydroelectric power plants out west because the drought was so severe. Right? I mean, this has been, you know, I, I, I don't know how to say it like this, but, you know, some, sometimes that there's, things kind of come together and they present opportunities for, for us, right, to really respond with in, in kind of, in useful ways. And, you know, you know, if you're kind of a believer, if you're kind of, you know, you believe in gods or the gods or, you know, whatever, however you want to talk about it. But, you know, for me, things kind of come together at moments, which kind of present opportunities for whatever reason. And now is wonderful, right? I mean, and it's the worst possible coming together. Like it's the, you know, a, a year that has seen like unprecedented climate change impacted weather events, extreme storms, droughts, wildfires. And remember, remember the heat wave a few weeks back, right? In the Pacific Northwest, it became hotter than Austin, Texas, 112 degrees or something like this? I mean, so that's all happening, right? So everybody can see that and it's touching kind of practically every continent right now in the most horrifying ways. People are getting killed because of what we have done to the climate. Right? And so that's the, the backdrop for this new report that came out, right? I mean, this is the, you know, I got right here, this is the summary for policymakers, right? The full report's available online for everybody to read, right? The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change is basically, you know, it's, it's your top scientists from around the world from like, you know, tons of member countries. And they're putting together a description of the science. And the reason why I give the one for policymakers is because I'm not a scientist. So, you know, the scientific jargon, it, you know, it's cool, but it's, it's, it takes me much longer to get through this. So the policymakers, it was written so that, you know, people could do with it. This doesn't represent, this doesn't give policy suggestions, right? What it does, it gives you the science and the science is pretty, pretty dire. Oh yeah, Nick reminds you, yeah, with the Texas freeze, you remember that one? When Texas froze over and the electrical grid crashed and people were left dazed, without electricity, without heat, without cooking gas, water was polluted, I mean, it was like, it's crazy. So this forms our context, you know, and it's also happening during the time where they're supposed to vote on this infrastructure bill, right? In, in Washington DC, this infrastructure bill. And there's only, you know, the bipartisan one, this is fucking nonsense, but whatever. The bipartisan one only has a few little climate things sprinkled in. But then there's this reconciliation bill that's supposed to kind of go forth, or reconciliation policy, however you want to talk about it, which will care, will bring all the climate stuff forward and we'll see if it's going to go through. Right? We'll see if it's going to go through. And if there's ever been an argument for why we need to go whole hog on the kind of rapid transformation of our economy, of our society, to prevent the worst from, from coming, it's now. I mean, it's now or never. And that's basically what they said, right? You know, on this report, if you haven't seen it, I'll just kind of, here's the, here we go. This is just a top line from the New York Times report on it, right? Says, nations have delayed curbing their fossil fuel emissions for so long that they can no longer stop global warming from intensifying over the next 30 years. Though there's still a short window to prevent the most harrowing future, a major new United Nations scientific report has concluded. Even if nations sharply, started sharply cutting emissions today, global warming is likely to rise to around 1.5 degrees Celsius within the next two decades. A hotter future that is now essentially locked in. Remember the 1.5 degrees was the, the, you know, the rosy picture from the Paris Accord. Most scientists that, they talked about it up there, said, no, no, we're locked in. And if you want to read a really good piece on this, I mean, I love Kate Aronoff. Carrie Aronoff is a, you know, she works on climate change, she's got a, a great book out. I want to say it's called overheated or heated, I'll have to give a plug of that in a little bit. But here, let me just read her first paragraph, because I think this is more on point. It says, "The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has released the first nearly 4,000-page installment of the sixth assessment report", which is what I was talking about. "The report from a working group of over 200 scientists distills the current consensus about the physical science of climate change from 14,000 peer-reviewed studies. This consensus is grim. None of the emission scenarios this report highlights see warming kept below 1.5 degrees Celsius. Heat waves previously seen only twice in a century will soon hit every six years, along with a slew of vicious storms and droughts. Atmospheric levels of carbon dioxide are at their highest point in 2 million years. We can no longer avoid some of the catastrophic warming coming our way. Avoiding the rest will entail, quote, 'immediate, rapid, large-scale reductions in greenhouse gas submissions,' unquote, per the IPCC Vice Chair Koberit. Most of these reductions need to come from polluting sectors that the Biden administration continues to treat with kid gloves." Later on, she says, "It's not that politicians in powerful countries have done nothing in the past two decades. The problem, rather, is that where they, where they've done anything at all, it has tended to be the wrong thing. Emphasizing subtle market tweaks and shiny new technologies instead of the core work of decarbonization, getting off fossil fuels as quickly as possible." I mean, this stuff is pretty dire. The thing that blew, blew my mind about this, this article by Kate Aronoff, right? By the way, it's called Playing Nice With The Fossil Fuel Industry Is Climate Denial, right, coming in The New Republic. Did I get that right? So this part, this is the paragraph that really jumped out to me. She says, "The Biden administration is now on track to approve more oil and gas drilling on public lands, activity that accounts for a quarter of US greenhouse gas emissions than any administration since George W. Bush. Climate envoy John Kerry has balked the idea of committing the US to a coal phase-out. Politicians who call themselves climate hawks are still going out of their way to make clear that there's a vibrant future ahead for the companies that funded climate denial, whose business model remains built around burning up and extracting as many fossil fuels as possible. Administration officials meanwhile have talked repeatedly about the need to cap warming at 1.5 degrees Celsius. This is climate denial." I mean, I don't know how else to put it. I mean, she talks about, you know, what we're seeing in some of these bills here. I'll, this will be the last piece that I'll read from this and then kind of talk a little bit about some of the takeaways, right? Yes, exactly, exactly what Emily just says. Emily's like, you know, look, Exxon scientists known about this since the 1970s. I mean, this is not, you know, this is not a debatable point, right? We know this for a fact now, right? We know this, the Exxon's own scientists knew this, right? So here's this piece. So this is about the new spending package, right? And what Biden has been talking about, so showing off a modest pilot, a pilot project for solar panel highways last week. Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg claimed the US has entered the race to, quote, "win the EV market," unquote. This, to put it plainly, is ridiculous. Let's compare, for example, where the US is, compare that to where China is on that front. The US currently has 1,650 electric and fuel cell buses currently, or, quote, "soon to be in use." Since 2015, China has rolled out 421,000 electric buses via generalist industrial policy that paid automaker BYD the equivalent of $150,000 for every $300,000 electric bus it churned out. That was paired with procurement policies that created a built-in market for, for what were then still clunky e-buses, forcing manufacturers to work out the kinks as they scaled production to meet demand from the public sector. Shenzhen alone now has 16,000 electric buses, along with some 12,000 EV taxis, right? So you're comparing 1,650 to 421,000, right? Do check out her article. Do check out her article. Her article is, you know, In The New Republic, Kate Aronoff, Playing Nice With The Fossil Fuel Industry Is Climate Denial. I'll try to remember to throw this link into the, the show notes when I'm done today. But it's a, you know, it is a wake-up call. This is from the New York Times, right? "At 1.5 degrees of warming, scientists have found the dangers now considerably. Nearly 1 billion people worldwide could swelter in more frequent life-threatening heatwaves. Hundreds of millions would soon struggle for water because of severe droughts. Some animal and plant species alive will be gone. Coral reefs will have more mass die-offs." Here's another piece. "The changes in climate to date have little to parallel in human history," the report said. "The last decade is quite likely the hottest planet has been in 125,000 years. The world glaciers are melting and receding at a rate, quote, 'unprecedented in at least the last 2,000 years,' unquote. Atmospheric levels of carbon dioxide have not been this high in at least 2 million years." This is the last thing I want to read from this New York Times piece, right? This is the article it's coming from, it's called Hotter Future Is Certain, Climate Panel Warns, But How Hot Is Up To Us? This is the key and this is where it's going to take all of our efforts. I mean, I know that people have been working extraordinarily hard, but how do we take that next step and build even more? I mean, you know, I know for me, that's certainly kind of been clarifying my vision of late. So this is the point. So, "Experts have estimated that the current policies being pursued by world governments will put the world on track for at roughly 3 degrees Celsius of warming by the end of the century. That has ramped up pressure on countries to make it more ambitious pledges beyond what they agreed to under an international climate agreement struck in Paris in 2015." Let me just think about that again. The policies that are being pursued by world governments now, not the ones that they've enacted. So these are policies that they have on the table that they have yet to enact. In our country, we can't pass them yet. Go filibuster, but that's a whole other discussion. These are not things that have been enacted. So if we do what we're promising to do, that we hope that we can do, that leaves us at 3 degrees Celsius warming, which is catastrophic. So, okay, I'll add one more. "If nations follow through on more recent promises, like Mr. Biden's April pledge to eliminate America's net carbon emissions by 2050, or China's vow to become carbon neutral by 2060, then something closer to 2 degrees Celsius of warming might be possible." Might be possible, right? This is, I mean, the people, I mean, you know, folks, this is huge. I mean, and I know you know that. I'm not, I'm not talking to, you know, people who don't know that there's climate change out there. But, you know, it's, I, I, I don't know about, I don't know about you, but for me, I feel like I'm constantly in this space of like, like I can't hold on to the horror all the time. If that, the horror is the wrong word, but I mean, the, how pressing it is, without feeling like I'm driving everybody around me crazy, right? And then, you know, you know, we took a family vacation last week and, and I made a conscious effort, just like I did when, you know, we went down the shore, kind of a few weeks back. I made a very conscious effort not to, you know, doom scroll. And it felt nice, you know, to spend time with my family, to be in the moment, right? To kind of really be present, right, in those moments. Like we're always, you know, told we need to be, you know, and, and it's like, ah, God, it feels so good. And then, I, I don't know what to call it, but you know, then I, then I come back home and I said, okay, time to kind of jump back in. And then I'm thinking like, what the hell was I just doing? You know, and I know what I'm just doing. I'm just laying this out for contrast because it's like, I'm like, what was I just doing? I mean, like, I don't have time to be on vacation. I mean, we gotta, this is a crisis. And nothing's moving quickly enough. And like, you know, and, and I'm fully aware that I'm like one person, like what the hell am I going to do, really? I mean, you know, I'm going to lend my support to struggles and things like that. Really? I mean, you know, I'm gonna lend my support to struggles and things like this. I mean, so me taking a week, you know, abstract, you know, taking a week to be with my family. And to, to, to just shut down for a little bit is like, you know, really is self care, right? For me and my family. Right? But I can't help but think, I'm like, oh, my God. You know, everything's burning down and I was pretending things are okay? I mean, it's just, it's just, I wrestle with that all the time. And this, you know, and this, this report is, uh. Certainly didn't help when it came to that wrestling match, let me put it like that, like that. So yeah, I mean, Sean and I are going to talk more about this on the show on Friday, I'm sure. Um, but you know, if you haven't had the, the chance to at least read some of the summaries or the, uh, um, some of the reporting on this, I mean, it's, uh. It's absolutely kind of important that we sit with it, right? Um, and be, you know, and, and be together with it, if you know what I'm saying. So there's that. I knew that was gonna be a hard place to begin. So in, in other news, right? Just goes back to, you know, then we've got, we've also got this Delta variant, which is, uh, and again, I don't know about you, for those, for those folks who are listening in who've got kids. And are, you know, schools kind of coming up right now, I mean, my kids are, I, I think, you know, excited. Um, for the most part to go back to school. My son says he'd rather just kind of stay home and stuff like that, but I, you know, there's part of him that just can't wait to see his friends and. He, he's never even been inside his middle school, you know, outside of like two very short visits, you know, because he's, you know, entered sixth grade last year, so he's going into seventh grade. So I know there's some excitement there and, you know, to be with friends again and stuff and, you know, I certainly know that. Last year took a toll on everybody, on all of us in my family, right? And took all people I know who've got kids who've been trying to kind of keep it all together through all this and work at the same time or. Pay the bills and, you know, still manage their kids schooling. And here we go, right? You think we would learn some lessons. But instead of learning lessons and making sure that we keep everybody safe going into the fall, now we see the kind of, you know. This crazy anti masking stuff all over again. And it's like the worst kind of performative, you know, politics. I mean, that's because that's all it is and, you know, I mean, you know, Sean, you know, Sean Kitchen has always said that, you know, look, Republican Party has become a death cult. Right? Um, primarily, and I'm, I'm inclined to agree with that pretty much one hundred percent. Right? And that's because, you know, um, when you promote policies that are going to send more and more people to their death. And you champion that and you call that freedom? I mean, what else do you call yourself but a death cult? I mean, when success, when like liberation. Means more people are sick and dying. What, what, who are you? How kind of like anti-human can you be? Right? Apparently pretty anti-human, so kind of that's where we are. So we see these cases kind of like spiking in Pennsylvania, we see, and again, Pennsylvania is by far not the worst place, right? We see what's happening in Texas, we see what's happening in Louisiana, we see what's happening in, uh, in Florida. You even have like, what is it, Asia Hutchinson from Arkansas, basically saying, you know what? I wish I never signed that law that said that we couldn't have mask mandates anymore because we really need them. And the guy who's like, you know, conservative Republican, who's got a huge, high popularity rate in Arkansas. Was hit the road and kind of did like a tour, basically, uh, letting everybody's try to encourage people to get vaccinated. Because they have an extraordinarily low vaccine, uh, vaccination rate there. And he was basically shouted down by people. You know, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty something. It's pretty something, so, so here we are. Um, you know, and already, you know, we have Governor Wolf here in Pennsylvania, who has said. That he's, you know, they're not gonna do any mandates, nope, no mandates. Um, you know, I know some people get mad at me when I go after Wolf, but you know, look, I mean, he's leaving office and he's leaving office with two things. One, you got whole, like wholesale behind the kind of the breakup of the Pashi system. Right? Forcing the merger of six universities into two. Right? And he's just gonna kind of like leave office, head on out, coast on out, saying, you know what? I'm not gonna get any political fights about, about masking because, you know, I don't feel like it, I don't know. No mandate, no, we'll leave it up to school districts. Okay, well, guess what? My school district, you got a bunch of kind of Q and Q and on conspiracy nuts running for school board. Right? Right now, as, as I'm recording this right now, as we're live right now, right? We went live at seven on Monday, August ninth. The school board meeting is happening right now and, uh, you know, I have friend of the show, right? Uh, sends us a little thing, I'm gonna pull him up here so you can kind of, uh, see him a little bit. Friend of the show Ross basically, uh, says, hey, I'm gonna be at that school board tonight, can you come? He's like, oh, you know, I've got my show tonight, so no. But he shows me basically there's, uh, been some canvassing going on. Uh, you know, door to door canvassing because it's a political season and guess what? Tonight, they're basically preparing for a school board meeting on Monday, August twenty-third. Now, obviously that's two weeks out, right? Um, but they are preparing to kind of go wholesale against, you know, this initiative, which is a kind of democracy. Uh, not democracy, diversity, equity and inclusion initiative, which is designed to make sure. That, um, all kids, right, feel welcomed and, um, kind of included. Right? So they've got these flyers, one that says DEI at Penridge. Right? And it says diversity, you know, and it's equals and it's what's crossed out is cultures, backgrounds, experiences, perspective, thoughts and opinions. Instead as diversity equals race, critical race theory, sexual identity, radical gender theory, identity. Right? And they say professional development, they show that we're gonna be looking at white fragility by Robin D'Angelo. Right? Paid with hot, you know, you know, uh, DEI training with tax dollars about, you know. Bringing in all this stuff, it says, well, what is it? What do the highlights include for tax dollars? Well, supporting LGBT youth in schools. Teaching transgender toolkit according to them. DEI team consultation with Laura Lomax on social justice, organizational change, culture, social, emotional learning. Twelve hundred and forty-four trainings on the topics of equity in, um, inequity, cultural responsive teaching, racial bias and making schools safe and inclusive for LGBTQ plus students. And white fragility, right? This is what they're claiming. On that same sheet, right? The other side, right? They're trying to, the candidates are kind of saying, you know, well, here's, here's what they're gonna do to you guys, here's what they're gonna do. About Siler Elementary Diversity Committee. The indoctrinates children into believing that white people are oppressors and black people are oppressed. It teaches to hate police officers, according to them. Right? It starts off by saying diversity, equity, inclusion, critical race theory, the political agenda that is being implemented in Penridge School District, but is totally inappropriate because it teaches kids. About skin color they would not learn on their own. I mean, this is some stuff and now what's, what's, what's really hard about this? Is that if you're talking to folks that, you know, aren't really tuned into politics all the time. What you find is that, uh, some of this stuff sounds. Like concerning, right? I mean, some of the stuff, you know, you could, you know, we should treat all of our kids equally, right? Not treat them by their color, right? We've been having this, this color blindness nonsense has been drilled into our brains for so long. I say, I don't see color. Oh, I'm sorry, was she black? I didn't even know, I didn't even, because I don't see color. All that nonsense, right? That's a convenient way around basically not kind of acknowledging racism, right? You know, by saying like, it just, it may just, it's just nonsense and we all know that. So anyways, um, there it is, um, Penridge School District, right? Um, they're gonna be, there's gonna be a big board meeting tonight. And, uh, it's gonna be, from what I understand, uh, this, this is gonna be, you know, discussed and people are gonna be at each other's throats again. We saw this getting reporting, uh, in Philadelphia, we've, we've kind of discussed this on the show before. And it's only kind of, kind of ramping up and getting worse. And you know, what Sean and I talked about, um, kind of a couple of weeks back was that, um. You know, there's this, there's this pack, right? And we actually Cyril and I talked about on the Wednesday show too as well, about the keeping kids in school pack, right? Which is, you know, you got this dark, it's another dark money, money organization that is funneling. Like, you know, huge chunks of money into these school board races, right? Into the Penridge School Board, right? Into the, you know, the Westchester School Board District, into the, uh, uh, Palisades School District, right? Into Central Bucks. And they're promoting, right? These Q and on conspiracy folks, right? And this playbook, which is all about ramping up fears and senses of injustice and keep that kind of that racist core hot, right? And I'm not saying that every single person is like in their heart of races. I don't, you know, whatever, how do you know what's in people's hearts? You don't. But you know that this, this whole nonsense about critical race theory in schools. Right? Is just another way of saying, like, we want to keep things white. We want to keep things American exceptionalism. We want to tell the good story about America without ever really looking at the bad. Right? We want to be able to say, yeah, slavery, something that happened a long, long time ago, but we solved it, we moved on. All right? Yeah, 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 there was Jim Crow and there were lynchings and there was like, yeah, 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 but you know, we solved that and we moved on. Right? Everything, right? Any advancement, right? That has been made by people through democratic organization and social justice and kind of, you know, mass movements, right? These people want to claim that it was somehow a natural progression about American culture. Right? I mean, which is, which is just absolutely like insane. If you ever read American labor history, for example, I mean, we know a little bit more about, you know, like the civil, you know, about slavery and, and, and. And the civil rights struggle, we know a little bit more as a, as a, as a culture. Um, than we know about labor history in this country, but there were labor history, this is why you gotta listen to Rick Smith Show, right? Because labor history in this country, like labor, in order to get the rights to like, you know. Not have to work on the weekends or, you know, kids not having, be forced to go to work, right? Or, you know, having a minimum wage, all that stuff. In this country, there were pitched battles and people died for those rights that we all take it for advantage now. They were like literally battles like with guns on both sides. Right? You gotta go back and look at the, you know, the, the shows that Rick did on Blair Mountain, West Virginia. I mean, it's just one example, look at the sit down strikes. The violence that was, that was enacted against workers throughout our history and that is buried. We never learned is somehow, you know, we have the weekend because, oh, America was realized. We, everybody has a right to vote now, wow, because, you know, Americans just, you know, eventually realized and there's this kind of like arc towards justice. No, people fought and died for these things. Right? And what's, 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 what's crazy making is that now you have these people on the right, these people that are, you know, the anti maskers, you these Q and on conspiracy, you know, critical race theory, like, you know. Flamethrowers, all this stuff. They want to take credit for this being America. When they were the same people that were fighting against those changes in the best, in the past. That they're using virtually the same arguments. That the people who tried to stop the civil rights movement, that tried to stop women's right to vote, that tried to stop like labor justice, that tried, I mean, you name it. It's virtually the same argument, you know, and I mentioned this on the show not too long ago too, but Chris Hayes did a great piece on this. This went back and just look at the language, look at the language that they've used. Right? As a way to keep a white supremacist system in place. It's the same nonsense. And no, not every person who's, this stuff is coming out of their mouths. Do they, if you ask them, do you believe in white supremacy? Most of them, I think honestly would say no. Right? Because they don't know how they benefit from this stuff. Cause we don't teach history to our kids. We teach a whitewashed version of it and it's gotten better since I was a kid, that's for sure. But once you start saying that you're gonna teach kids the truth and grapple with the difficulty and contradictions of this, of this nation. That started out in genocide and forced labor. That is part of who we are. Just like, you know, you got, you have people that look back to like, you know, Viking heritage and Norwegian thing, and let's look back to the Viking gods and the Norse gods and, you know, claim that culture. Well, you go back, right? That's thousands of years ago. You go back like five hundred years, four hundred years, three hundred years in American history? That's our heritage. But we do, we bury it. And we don't teach the truth of it. That's what these people don't want, they don't want that truth. They want it whitewashed, they want it cleansed for everybody. And so, you know, look, and I was just listening to a program earlier today and, um, maybe we'll talk again about this on Friday, but. You know, there's a big money, uh, that has been pouring into these school boards. I mean, not just this, uh, keeping kids in school pack in Pennsylvania, which is, you know, as Sean has said, this has gone statewide now. Right? PA Spotlight has been doing great reporting and kind of digging some of that stuff out. Looking at the ways in which that, you know, this dark money is funding these school board races as the kind of the next round of, uh, you know, political action on the right wing. There is also, you know, these national organizations that are basically instructing folks about how to run for school board. Right? And let's target the school boards, right? Because guess what? The progressives and Democrats haven't kind of looked at it. So. So that's where, you know, there's another thing I want to, uh, this is from a listener, uh, who sent this in, um, kind of earlier today. It's gonna read this, uh, says, this is an example, you know, when I was talking about what, what the, you know, these, these flyers that I was talking about earlier. Uh, that was being shopped around by Penridge School Board candidates on the right wing. So, uh, listener says, this is an example of why DEI is so important in schools and students. These Penridge BCS, okay, it's BBCC twenty-one candidates. That, just so you know who these folks are, I mean, we've talked about it before. Um, Batiki, Blongrim, Chaken and Cormac for Penridge School Board, they're going on this like BBCC twenty-one. Um, thing, you can check out their website, you can see what their, or check out their Facebook page and see what they're all about. Um, just so you don't have to believe me, you can go check it out for yourself and see what they are. Anyways, that this, where these candidates are endorsed by the same keeping kids in school pack that endorse, uh, the meth actin candidate. Uh, meth actin, did I get that right? And denounced, uh, denounced now for his public bigotry against people with autism. Right? And then the concerned Westchester area school district constituents, um, on their Twitter account wrote, the Autism Society of Philly. Um, um, statement on the platform of hate speech by Joe Rittenhouse, one of the keeping kids in school packs extremist bigoted candidates, right? And they kind of, you know, say what this is about and it says, you know, is this, I don't know if you can, how you, well, you can see it, but they've got this letter. Right? And has looked at this, so. We read a bit of this, as the Autism Society of Greater Philadelphia has learned about multiple tweets and Facebook postings by Joe Rittenhouse, which uses autism as an insult to put down others. Mr. Rittenhouse currently is running for school board in the Methacton School District. He claims that his insults are jokes and are acceptable because he has friends and family who have autism, who are on the autistic spectrum. Or who are neuro, uh, neurodiverse, that is no excuse. His postings are demeaning, being spirited and ignorant. They're also not an isolated incident. He has made numerous such postings over an extended period of time. Right? This has been the same kind of situation we've had in the Penridge School District with Joan Cullen. Right? She does the same move, oh, they're just jokes, blah, 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 blah. What are you, can't joke anymore? Can't joke anymore about autistic people? You can't make racist jokes anymore? They're not funny anymore, what? You know? So, you know, this is the kind of stuff and this is what, who the keeping kids in school pack is supporting. They're supporting these four candidates in the Penridge School District, they're reporting extremist candidates in the, um, the Palisades School District. This is the Westchester School District, obviously, in the Central Buck School District. Right? And now they're going statewide. And you're, we've seen that, we hear this, you know, tune into, uh, the Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast, listen to what they're talking about, some of the school district stuff that's happening. Kind of out of the western part of the state, for example. Right? Good example of that. So all the more reason that we've got to organize, right, folks? All the reason we've got to organize. Uh, so listen, I'm gonna take a quick, uh, kind of a, a quick pause here. So listen, if there's anybody out there that does, uh, kind of want to call in, you've got something on your mind. Um, you can kind of take this opportunity to, uh, kind of head on over to, um. Head on over to Riverside.fm, if you go down into the show notes or go down to the description of our YouTube channel. It'll show, there should be a link right there. I am going to take this link right now and, um, I'm gonna plop it into our. Um, copy link, here we go. Sorry, 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 I'm always a little slow on this. Uh, I'm gonna paste it in here, uh, for Riverside, oops, caps lock. Uh, FM link. All right, gonna post that right there. Um, so just as a reminder, if you do want to call in, you're gonna have to. Alright, going to post that right there. Um, so just as a reminder, if you do want to call in, you're going to have to basically shut off the volume on YouTube. Um, and kind of you're going to be listening through, um, uh, Riverside.fm. And you can join there, you can, uh, you can kind of call in once you're going to join the show there. You'll basically hear the recorder, you'll catch up, you're going to see there's going to be a little difference in the timestamp, um, on this, because it's a little delay as it streams over to YouTube. Um, but once you kind of get caught up. Uh, we kind of listened in a little bit. Um, if you've got something you want to say, you want to call in, please do. Um, I also encourage you, you've got more things that are on your mind, you want to kind of throw it into the comment section, um, or as part of the chat. Our YouTube chat, um, I'd love to hear more from you. So I'm going to take this, uh, just a little bit of a, a quick break. And, uh, when we come back, um, we're going to, I got a little more that I want to talk about, but, uh, you know, want to hear what's on your mind too as well. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. We'll be right back. Alright, we are back. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken, um, back here. Um, we are broadcasting live on our YouTube channel as well as on Riverside.fm. And, um, appreciate everyone tuning in tonight. A special thanks to, uh, Nick and Emily for, uh, making the chat active. I appreciate it. Um, it's always great to know that there's other folks out there that are thinking about stuff too as well, and I'm not just sitting here talking to myself. It's always nice. Um, so yeah, so one of the thing I wanted to bring up is that, you know, I, I, I think I'm going to start kind of asking around a little bit more about this because, um, I had another listener who kind of sent some stuff into me today. Um, this listener said they couldn't make it tonight. Um, but was kind of curious about my thoughts about something and, um, in, in particular, it was about the, um, the Bucks County Democratic Committee, like, I guess I, wait, my understanding of it is this, let me, let me just kind of see if I can capture this, alright? Is the, the Bucks County Democratic Committee's kind of like informal policy. Um, I guess, that's the way to express it, this is kind of my words. To basically not start campaigning for, uh, like the house seat until all the local elections are done. Right? So like, so in other words, right? So you have these election cycles, right? So we are, right now we have all these school board races, right? And obviously there needs to be attention paid to these school board races, right? They are, they are critically important. Um, and there's these kind of local races, so this is kind of like an off off here at your election, right? So then we have the midterm elections that are coming up in 2019. I'm sorry, what am I talking about? I'm talking about three years ago, whatever. So in 2022, my fault. Right? Um, and it's only after these local elections are done, then you start kind of the last campaign. And it's just struck me as extraordinarily odd. I mean, like, a, a, and this is why it matters, right? For me at least, okay? I don't want to put words in anybody else's mouth. Right? Um, but it matters to me because, you know, in, in the PA one, right? That's the, the Bucks County, it's mostly Bucks County. It's about 90% of Bucks County. Uh, there's a little bit, I think a little chunk out of Montgomery County in there. Most of it is Bucks County. Right? Is the, the Fitzpatrick brothers, right? I mean, now it's, you know, Brian Fitzpatrick, right? Mike Fitzpatrick, his brother who's, who's passed on now, right? But he's, uh, he had the seat before them. Is there a machine in this area? Alright? And they hold a critical district. And one of the things that, that, that Brian Fitzpatrick and his brother before him have cultivated is they cultivated this idea that they are, you know, moderates. Right? They cultivated this idea that, you know, they are, they are, you know, moderates. They consider both sides and they're independent. They're not like party line people and so on. Um, and yet, if you look at his voting record, if you look at Brian Fitzpatrick voting record for Trump, I mean, he's like with him lockstep. Right? But, but even that, i- if you're, you're talking about organizing in order to maintain power on the national level, right? So we're talking about this is the national level, right? Brian Fitzpatrick is represented for the PA one that goes to, you know, that goes to Washington DC. Is that the number, what letter is after their name, the R or the D? It matters in terms of maintaining a majority in the House. Alright, so if you're organizing for power, right? And you're part of a party that is supposed to want to win the majority of all seats, then you've got to campaign and you've got to prepare and you've got to campaign against people like Fitzpatrick. You have to put up a stronger organizational campaign than Fitzpatrick's machine does. Right? And you need to basically expose this kind of like independent moderate nonsense for what it is. It's a political tactic in kind of a purple leaning blue county. And you know, you've heard me talk about this on the show on, 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 you know, this is a ways back. Like I was absolutely pissed going around this county, um, in, during the last election cycle, going around this county and see like, you know, PSEA, right? Teachers Union, like supports Fitzpatrick. Right? Sierra Club supports Fitzpatrick or Penn Environment. I don't know the Sierra Club, Penn Environment supports, I mean, these, these progressive left groups getting behind Fitzpatrick. Right? And why does that matter? Because there's a whole bunch of other organizations, right? That are, they're all about getting out to vote. Right? Putting boots on the ground. Labor unions are probably one of the most important when it comes to kind of like getting people out to vote. However, we've seen now new organizations like, you know, we've seen like the Women's March, right? And that mobilized a lot of people. We've seen people like DSA. We've seen Indivisible doing a lot of that mobilization on the ground. Right? A lot of those organizations, right? You know, they get their funding some, for someplace and sometimes it's from the same places that, you know, that are giving endorsements. Sometimes like PSEA gives money to help to get out the vote things. But what happens if PSEA, PSEA endorses Fitzpatrick? Well, guess what? Those get out the vote, get out the vote for the Democrats? Those organizations are going to think twice about the organizing on the ground for the Democrat. Why? Because they risk losing their funding from those other organizations. And, and, and like, look, I mean, if he was a moderate Republican, I get the arguments, right? But the fact is, is that, you know, the, the train has left the station a long time ago. If you look at, listen to what Cyril and I talk about on, on the Wednesday show, on, on Wednes, you know, obviously on Wednesdays. About what has happened to the, to the Bucks County Republican Party. The, the moderate Republicans is just the shell of which these radicals are organizing inside of. Right? I mean, and so what this means, so basically, okay, so let me get back to my point. My point was, as this, this listener kind of sent this information about what the, the Bucks County Democratic Committee does, is they want to wait it out. But the problem is if you're not working, you're not identifying candidates and campaigning against Fitzpatrick all the time. You, you're never going to win. Or if you win, it's going to be like, you know, luck or something happens. Right? You know, when you organize to like defeat a candidate that's got a machine like Fitzpatrick, you need to organize all the time. You need to be developing candidates all the time. You need to be building power. And I mentioned this on the, on the last Out to Coop Live, right? I had two candidates recently show up here. Robin Robinson, who's the currently kind of recorder of deeds in Bucks County. Was one of them and she's going to be on the show in the weeks coming up. Right? And, oh my God, I can't believe I'm spacing her name. Um, here we go. Antonetta Stancu, right? They showed up at my door. Right? We got to talk about, and they're just, they're going to be great candidates, right? Both of them, right? Robin Robinson's already won and like Antonetta Stan, Stancu is kind of running for attorney, was it attorney? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I want to get it right. Uh, District Attorney, District Attorney, I knew we got that wrong. Uh, running for District Attorney, right? And she's got a shot, but we got to, you know, there has to be organizing happening now. Right? And there needs to be organizing happening against Fitzpatrick at the same time. These two things can't, are, are, you cannot expect to beat Fitzpatrick if you're just going to wait until all these other ones are done. And my point about kind of about, about these two women candidates that showed up is they were like, it's the second time since I've lived in Percasie, which is a, almost 13 years now. The second time any Democrat has knocked on my door. Right? And I know there's people that are working really, really hard to change this, but I do think what's going to happen, at least I'm becoming more and more convinced of this. And yes, I know I need to start putting my money where my mouth is, but you know, hopefully my, you know, my kids are of the age now that are going to have a little bit more flexibility in my time, hopefully. Where I could work on this stuff too as well. But that organizing has to happen all the time and we need leadership that understands that in Bucks County. Right? And this is not a knock on people who've put their time in and spent a lot of time kind of like holding on to what, you know, Democratic Party in Bucks County or in the Penridge area, whatever it might be. But I, I gotta say, we got to make sure that we've got progressives that are running these parties. Cause the old school is just not going to work. Emily says too as well, would love to know who the Democrats want, who the Democrats want to run against Craig Stats in my district. I'm with you 100%. As someone who's also in Craig Stats District. Right? I, I remember I, I was trying to find out and I found extraordinarily hard just to find out who was going to be running. Craig Stats is running in a district, right? Was it Quakertown, right? Percasie and things like this. This is a winnable district, if you ask me. But you know, you can't wait. And, you know, for me, Democrats in this county are, are really going to have to get behind an organizing model of party building. And I know it is happening in places and I know people are pushing really hard. Right? But I think we all got to be in on this. So I want to, I, and the reason why I'm leading up to this stuff is so I want to try to get some folks on the show in the, in the coming weeks too as well. Um, to, to get, you know, to dig down a little bit into, uh, Bucks County, uh, Democratic Party politics. Right? Wanted to get into some of the organizing that, that needs to happen. Wanted to kind of help expose Brian Fitzpatrick's whole kind of charade, charade, however you say it. About being a moderate independent. Alright, so that's coming up in the weeks and have to as well. Um, so there's that. Anyways. That's what's on my mind. So if anybody else out there has got any other thoughts, uh, I was, uh, I, I know it's probably not still going on, uh, the Penridge School Board tonight. Um, I was, you know, sometimes on Mondays, it does a school board meeting, uh, we'll get Ross will kind of jump on at the end of the show. Uh, give us a little update, but it's not there. Um, but you know, it's Monday and I'm back and I'm, I have to say I'm glad that, uh, I'm glad I had the time away, but it's really good to be back once again, talking to everybody here. And, uh, I'm looking forward to some really cool stuff in the, the weeks and months ahead. Um, you know, we've got some, uh, some new shows that are coming up. I, I, I've been trying to, you know, I had a question earlier on today too as well from, uh, from a listener who said, hey, you going to get any someone from the, of the Penridge School Board? Candidates, uh, Democratic School Board candidates on? And I'm like, I'm trying. I'm trying. I've been back and forth. I've reached out to them all. Um, I'm, you know, wanted to try to set a date, so let's get a set, a date set down. So hopefully, uh, we're going to get, um, some, if not all of them on. I mean, I'll have them on individually. I'll have them on two at a time. I'll have them all on at once. I don't care. Um, same is true for Palisades, same is true for like, so. Some of that may happen as part of Out to Coop Live on our Monday night show. Uh, we might actually have to, have to sketch out or sort of cut out some time that we're just going to do some pre-recorded interviews and we'll release those separately. Uh, but I think this is really important to be, especially as we're seeing, you know, the, uh, the Delta variant of the coronavirus ramp up once again. And there's all, and the stuff around the, uh, uh, critical race theory is really kind of, um, intensifying as we get closer to the start of the school year. I want to make sure we get some of these candidates on to kind of, um, uh, kind of hear what they got to say and what they're thinking about, kind of, you know, some of the issues that they're facing in running for school board right now. Um, so that's coming up. Um, Sean and I should, I, as far as I know, uh, he and I will be back this Friday. Um, and we'll be back to give you the politics roundup, uh, about the good, the bad, the ugly, state and national politics. Um, at some point in the, uh, this fall, um, will be the first episode of, I think what I'm calling Space Left. Right? Going to do a kind of monthly, I think it's going to be, uh, addition to the podcast, which is going to be on, uh, kind of space policy and galactic, what I've called in the past is galactic capitalism and kind of to tease out some of the stuff that's been going on there that I usually reserve like, you know, part three of our, our last call on our Friday show. I'm going to do, uh, um, kind of a little breakout one that'll be for fun. Oh, and I know the other one I wanted to talk about. So I've been wanting to do this one thing for a long time now. You know, I'll be watching the news or I'll be watching, uh, or I'll be listening or reading a newspaper for that matter. And I'll be listening to how certain people respond, like particular, you know, I pay a lot of attention to how Democrats are responding and kind of framing problems and stuff. And periodically I'll, I'll, I'll talk about this on the Friday show and I'll say, as they, you know, um, you know, free political consulting advice, right? Um, but really it's about kind of like, like thinking about messaging and thinking about kind of the ways you respond to particular problems. And some of the, you know, really problematic ways that Democrats, uh, tend to frame things that are actually counterproductive to what the kind of they claim to want. And, uh, you know, so I have this, this, this kind of like fantasy show that's gone on in my head for a while now. That, you know, I bookmarked these different sound clips and then, um, I put together a show of going through all these sound clips. And it never happens. It never happens because I forget about which show that it was or other things kind of take precedent or so on. So what I thought I was, what I think I would do is instead of waiting to compile that stuff, I'm going to release some stuff that's going to be released, um, on our, our, our Patreon, our Patreon's, uh, site first. Right? So it'll be kind of, uh, for patrons only for like the first like week or something like this. And then it'll be kind of available for the public. So I don't want to kind of keep it all private for those folks, um, you know, who can't, um, become a patron, right? Uh, who can't become a patron at patreon.com slash RC Press for five bucks a month. There you go. Um, but I don't want to keep that, hey, Shanna, what's up? Um, for, I, I, you know, I don't want to keep, keep that out. So I'd be kind of, I think it's fun and this is where it intersects with my academic work too as well, because you know, I'm a kind of a rhetorician, I kind of study rhetorical theory and social movements. And, um, honing in on some of the ways that kind of say, uh, language works and kind of organizing works and what becomes effective possible, possibility, what's wrong with, with particular ways of responding or the way that certain particular media figures frame an issue. Um, I'll probably dig on. So, you know, we'll see. I, I'm going to try to, you know, next time one comes up, I'm going to snag the sound right away and then, uh, give myself a few minutes to, um, to kind of run through it with you. So that's what I'll be coming up to as well. I've been looking for little things that I can do to, um, you know, kind of little extra bonuses for, for our patrons. Right? Um, to give them kind of like, you know, early access to, um, some shows and that kind of thing, a little extras. Um, that is like just another way of saying thank you for becoming a patron. Thank you for helping support the show. I've also got some things that, um, I'm, hopefully I could do it this week. If not, it'll be next week. I've got some kind of little surprises I'm going to send out to our patrons. Um, uh, too as well. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, some stuff that I've been digging up and kind of having so, but I'll, I'll shut my mouth about that, just as a kind of little thank yous. Um, but hey, if there's, uh, nothing else that anybody else has got on their mind, um, then, uh, I'll slowly kind of, kind of wind this up. Um, if, uh, you do have anything you want to throw into the chat, please do. If you've got a question, uh, thoughts, um, things that are on your mind, throw it there. Um, the other thing I want to remind folks of is anytime you have an idea of, of someone who might be a good guest. Um, you know, shoot me an email or send me a message, but shoot me an email that ragingchickenpress@gmail.com. That's ragingchickenpress@gmail.com. Um, shoot me kind of show ideas and that kind of stuff. I actually love that too as well. Um, um, that would be super helpful. And, you know, uh, you know, somebody who you think that just would be, you know, that you heard someplace else that you'd like to hear, um, kind of more of, um, yeah, send it my way, which is just kind of what I just said and I just said it again. I don't know what I'm doing anyways. Well, everybody, uh, listen, thank you all for tuning in tonight. Um, thank you for becoming, uh, you know, patron for all you patrons out there. For all your listeners out there, um, whether you've become a patron or not, please make sure that you subscribe to the YouTube channel. Make sure they like this stream and make sure you hit that notification bell so you know every time we go live and share this show out. I mean, I can't tell you, we've had just, just some amazing folks, right? Especially on Twitter. Who have been sharing on our shows, um, who, you know, every time, you know, literally I'll tweet something out and like, you know, within like, you know, five minutes, sometimes less than that, um, is being liked and shared around and that's had a really measurable impact. On, you know, people kind of, you know, get involved with the show. If you hear something that you like too as well, let me know. I'd love to hear that too as well, let other people know. Um, if you have like little segments of the show that you found especially useful, let me know about that too as well. Um, because I don't know if you've noticed this, but I've broken out some kind of shorter video segments that I've been kind of releasing those segments to as well. Love to do more of that. But love, you know, to kind of grow the show and kind of become, say, uh, kind of even more relevant and more interesting and more valuable, um, to all of you. So with that, uh, want to remind you everybody that you can become a patron of this show. Just go to patreon.com/rcpress and, uh, you can become a patron for those five bucks a month, like great cup of coffee and a biscuit or like, uh, you know, a good craft beer, you know, once a month. Uh, you do that, you can help support this show. Want to thank you and, uh, I don't have a touch base with Cyril yet about Wednesday, but I hope we will see you Wednesday. If not, we'll see you Friday and then we'll see you again next week. Kevin Mahoney.